Billy, you're good to go. Now we have trustee Sterling.
Great, thank you very much. Welcome everybody as I said to this year's first VOT meeting. It's January 3rd, 2023. Macy, would you please take the role?
Mayor Billy.
Here.
Trustee Corvallon.
Here.
Trustee Severs. And trustee Sterling. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Go ahead and move into consent agenda. We have three items, if I remember correctly, four items on the consent agenda. Any, any questions from the trustees? I have one quick question. Why is this amendment two to the item 3.5? I guess we have five items, sorry, on the consent agenda. On 3.5, why is this called amendment two? Remind me of amendment one.
So your initial amendment was the increase that you gave me as well as the bonus back a few months ago. And then this amendment is related to providing me the cost of living increase.
Great, thank you. That's my question. Any other questions on these five items on consent agenda? If not, can I ask for a motion? I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Trustees Sterling, you're really quiet right now.
Okay.
So we have a motion in a second, Macy?
Okay, trustee Severs. Mayor Billy. Trustee Sterling.
Yes.
And trustee Corvallon.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone. So from there, we'll go into public comment and non-agenda items. We had one submitted today by Susan Wagner, which I've been able to read, hopefully everyone else did. And at this point, I'll open it up for public comment on non-agenda items. It's three minutes. State your name and your relationship to Netherlands and three minutes for your comment.
Okay, shall I go ahead? I have a comment on my comment.
That would be great.
Okay, so I'm Susan Wagner. I live at 12300 Magnolia Drive. My family and I have owned a 10 acre mining claim since 1988. It abuts the southern border of the town at Big Springs. I apologize. At the last meeting, I was a little emotional and I forgot to identify myself or say where I lived. And Dawn's reminder to me and everyone that I live outside the town boundaries led me to think a little bit harder about why it's important for you all who are the decision makers to know who we are when we comment to you and what our personal stake and interest is. So that's why in the comment, written comment, I gave you more information about my background with the IGA. In that comment, I asked if there'd be more public discussion of the annexation ordinance and the IGA. And the reason why I believe this is necessary is, one, I don't believe that your deliberations reflected a thorough consideration of some very thoughtful, well-developed arguments by your constituents, who are, of course, primarily your voters, who you receive your power from. You aren't inherently powerful. And I did not hear, on December 20th, since I know the sunshine law prevents you from meeting and discussing as a group any issues before the public, unless you're before the public. So I'm assuming that December 20th meeting was the only time you discussed the comments that you received for either the 12-6 meeting. So I believe you haven't considered the views of all the stakeholders involved, and we need more input. And I heard many of the people at the meeting on 1220 ask for that. I also believe that while we all have different interests, it's important for you to know who are the people who are pressing for one decision or another. It's important that we all are basing our discussions on facts. And as I laid out in my written comment, the apparent narrative that I've heard consistently doesn't match my understanding of the county's concessions made to the town. And I just wonder how many of the trustees are thoroughly familiar with the town's comprehensive plan, with the draft IGA that was worked out over two years from 2017 to 2019, and the town's history of resisting expanding out beyond its boundaries, because this was not forced on the town by the county. It came from the hearts and minds of the people who live here. So I would like to see more meetings. At the end of my written comment, I suggested one amendment, but also I would like to see you restore the vote and an argument that wasn't discussed at all when you this is, in fact, the only place I heard any serious discussion of a comment, but it was a discussion that took Eric Davis's request for a vote and turned it into, let's get rid of the vote because our people just aren't active enough, and we need to make them sign a petition to get a vote. We're going to force them, you know, to force a vote, as trustee Severs put it. So here's why I don't think that's a good idea. You didn't discuss the importance of a secret vote. And with a petition, it's the same thing. People who organize a petition will be subject to social and political pressure from some very powerful people who don't want to vote. And if that's the case.
Three minutes are up, so.
Okay, thank you for listening. I'm done.
Thanks, Susan. Appreciate it. Are there any other public comments on non-agenda items? And if you're talking and right now, we can't hear you, so it starts to fix. If not.
Mayor Billy, you ended up muted. I can hear you talking, but they can't.
I hit that button one too many times. If not, we'll move on from the public comment and non-agenda items into our action items for this evening. We have two action items, I do believe. One is the appointment to the trustee vacancy, and the other is utilities connection for 879 County Road 128 West. So if you would, I think Miranda, if you would kick us off with the aim for trustee vacancy.
Yep, happy to. So on December 3rd, 2022, trustee Blake Moore unfortunately submitted her resignation to the board of trustees. When a resignation or vacancy occurs, the board has the ability to decide if you want to fill it through appointment or by ordering a special election. And that decision needs to be made within 60 days from when the vacancy occurred. On December 6th, the board of trustees voted that you wanted to fill the vacancy through appointment. We released the request for applications on December 8th with a due date of 5:00 PM on December 29th. We received one application from John Mountain by the due date, and he is on with us tonight. Anyone who is appointed would serve a term ending in April 2024. That's a partial term. And so really, the question before the board is, does the board want to appoint John Mountain to fill that vacancy? And my assumption, Mayor Billy, is you'd like John to introduce himself to the board and the public, but I will turn it back over to you.
Yeah, thanks a bunch, Miranda. Appreciate the intro and with us here this evening. So yeah, at this point, I think I'd like, if you're ready, John, for you to make your statement, talk to us, and tell us tell us why you'd like to join us as a trustee and after that, we will have different trustees ask questions. There will be time for public comment as well. And then if needed, more discussion and motions. Go ahead, John.
Sounds good. Thank you, Billy. Appreciate the intro, Miranda, you as well. I've had a chance to meet with some of you. Jesse and Tom, you guys reached out right away. It was great to meet you guys. I haven't had a chance to meet you, Tanya. I know that you just got back from, it sounds like an amazing vacation, so looking forward to that in the future. But Billy, you and I met today, and that was a, that was a great meeting. I know that I am sort of a new face around town. So, you know, most of you probably don't recognize me. I've been in Netherlands for about a year and a half. Longtime listener, first time caller. I've been really wanting to move to Netherlands for probably close to eight years. And I finally made the move. I've lived in Summit County, lived in Gunnison for a while, as well as a few other small mountain towns, and I really loved it. The reason I found myself interested in joining the board of trustees is I've had the chance to get to see some town politics in action, some of the other places that I've lived, including Erie. And I've seen that in some cases, it does take a few people to raise their voices and really advocate strongly for certain things that happen in a town in terms of growth. I think there can be positive growth, and I think there can be negative growth. And as much as I've grown to love Netherlands, I know that you all do too. And I'd really like to learn more, first and foremost, about, you know, the initiatives and the important, you know, issues and items on the town's agenda. Know how you guys feel about them and know why. And also perhaps put my effort and focus into helping shape those decisions as well. So I don't, I don't pretend to know everything. I definitely am very open-minded. I consider myself pretty, pretty much left-leaning, but fiscally, I like to think of myself as, you know, somewhat, somewhat conservative in my own, in my own personal feelings. So you know, I think if we're careful, if I'm careful with my money, I can put it to good use. And I'd love to learn how maybe I can put my efforts in volunteer-wise, because I know these aren't paid positions. And I definitely have maxed out my volunteer time with the Netherlands Fire Department, as well as some other volunteer activities that I do. So I don't have a huge amount to offer, but what little I do, I'd like to see in what areas I can, I can help you guys. And yeah, thanks for welcoming me and including me in on these conversations. So excited to be here. Again, you know, I did talk to some of you, Nicole, you and I spoke last week. It was a pleasure meeting you as well. And, you know, I do have to say, I still, I think I need to learn a little bit more about the actual time commitment. I unfortunately do not have much more than maybe five to eight hours a week to offer the town. And I realize that that's a, you know, possibly a minimal sacrifice. And, you know, I appreciate you guys bearing in mind, you know, who would be the best for that role. And I'm not a good fit all the way around. I'm okay with, you know, just joining the meetings as a, you know, an eager town participant as well. So but again, thanks for having me, you guys. And again, it's been a pleasure meeting the folks that I have had a chance to meet with. Miranda, you've been amazing introducing me to the people in town, including the high school kids that we chatted with last week and connecting everybody as well. So been very responsive to all my many requests as well as a new resident. I know I've been hopefully not too much of a high maintenance individual. So but thanks again, everybody. So any questions for me or?
Yeah, thanks. Appreciate you introducing yourself and taking time to meet with me today. Any, any initial questions from the trustees? We'll have more time for that later, too. Just wanted to know if anyone had initial question upfront?
What's the difference between an initial question and just a question?
Who knows? I just made that one up.
Okay, are we going to do any questions from the public or kind of just?
We're going to go into public comment next. I just wanted to know if there was something that was burning for trustees first. If not, we'll go ahead and open it up for public comment. Anyone from the public have anything they want to ask or bring it up? Now, three minutes. And then this is specifically around this appointment. So seeing none and hearing none, we will move on and come back to the Susan, thanks. So we do have a
Since I'm here and no one else in the public is asking a question, John Mountain, I was interested, I read your bio, and I saw that on the side, something about your interest in investing in real estate and so on. And I just wonder what your I know you, I agree with you, there's good development and bad development. And I think all of us, this is one of the big discussions right now for the town is how do we develop? How do we create affordable housing? And how do we balance these efforts? So I just wondered if you if you have any specific views on I guess I would say, when I read that first line, I thought maybe you had an interest in, in developing undeveloped land on the borders of the town, which is one of the things that some people would like to see and someone. And if you don't feel like you want to answer that, that's fine. I just, I'm curious.
That's a great question, Susan. I consider myself to be somewhat of an acolyte of, of some of the, I guess you'd call them, you know, the Ben Graham sort of investor mindsets. And, you know, the first thing that I look at is cash on cash and cap rate. And it's just impossible right now, from my personal perspective, to make money in Colorado and in most places as a land or a real estate investor, unless you're fairly big. So I don't know what I don't know. And again, I'd like to emphasize that I keep a pretty open mind. I don't yet know how I feel about development in certain respects. I need to, I need to learn more. I've heard there are some plans. I haven't seen them yet. But I know that from personal experience, it is impossible to stop progress. It can be good progress, or it can be progress that you don't find so favorable from what I've, from what I've experienced in small-town politics. You know, I saw a lot of the old guard in Erie block a lot of small business growth. And then I saw fracking take over in a lot of those areas where small businesses could have been formed. So, so I guess I guess I have an open mind when it comes to development, Susan. So I think that's a great question. You know, I, I do know a tiny bit about sustainability. I know a little bit about green construction. I don't know enough to call myself an expert by any means. But I, I do know that in most cases, it's almost impossible to build sustainably. And and profitable enough to, to really rest in some ways. And I'm not saying that sustainability is impossible. What I'm saying is, from a small business owner's perspective, when I go and look at an investment, I have a totally different mindset than, than some of these, than some people do. And, and so that doesn't mean that I'm right. It just means that I need to learn more. So but, you know, when I would, when I would, my property, it would almost always wind up being something that was really rough around the edges when I started the investment. By the time I was done with it, it was something that I was proud of. So I take, I take a sense of pride and personal ownership in all of the projects that I commit to, no matter how many nights and weekends I have to dedicate to them. I typically treat them like I would my own home. And, and so I guess what I would, what I would say in closing is that I would probably take into a consideration Netherlands being all of our home as, as, you know, we welcome in new projects, which I don't, I don't think is a bad idea. But I would also take into consideration that, you know, the town hasn't experienced a huge amount of growth and change, like some small mountain towns have either. So so I'm very curious and interested in knowing, you know, how people in town feel about that, and whether there's enough support and, you know, why there is or isn't. So.
Thank, thank you. I appreciate your thoughtful and humble and genuine opinion. I appreciate your, appreciate you. I'm impressed. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks for the question.
Thanks, Susan. Any other public comments? If not, I will go ahead and close the public comment part of this action item and bring it to the, back to the trustees for questions for John.
John, it's Nicole. How are you?
Good, Nicole. Good to see you again.
Can you guys hear me? Okay. Okay. So one of the things when we had talked on the phone, you had talked about the need for the town to bring in additional revenue, right? And one of the things that you had suggested was a commercial tax. But how would you sell that to the municipality, knowing that they just approved three measures to increase the tax? And probably tapped out because we have some of the highest, you know, taxes in the state of Colorado. So how would you sell that back to the constituents as a good idea?
That's a great question, Nicole. I think we primarily we have to remember that there are already a huge number of visitors every year that come to Netherlands. And I think reminding folks that when lines are out the door for our best places of business, not to mention any names or drop any names, but Crosscut, Salto, you know, many names come, come, come to mind. But when these businesses have lines out the door, the people who are in town for, you know, the leak show or for whatever reason, you know, the High Cassie will most likely just pass on spending their money here and go back down the boulder and spend their money there. So I think that the primary goal, Nicole, in my mind, is to actually attract new business first and then figure out how we can supplement you know, this great place to live and make it more affordable for, for the service industry folks who, quite honestly, are the front line for all of the folks who do, do visit. And in whatever way that we can. I mean, I've seen certain types of tax measures passed in Summit County, for example. And if it's, you know, if it's spread across enough businesses, it can be a very small, small amount of tax. But, you know, the REIs and you know, the food and service and beverage industries all sort of absorb that tiny little amount through revenue and sales of the visitor. And because so many doors are open, you know, that tiny amount, that tiny increase really makes a difference for the residents. You know, Billy and I, we talked today, and Summit County still has a huge deficit in affordable living. But I would, I would suggest that perhaps Netherlands has a twofold problem. It has maybe a lack of open business doors and a lack of affordable housing for the service industry. So I think, you know, increasing one can help with the other. And, you know, that's a complicated chicken and egg sort of, I guess, problem. But the beauty is, is that we're a short bus ride away from a huge amount of talent and resources who can come help us out while we're growing the business sector in, in a way that that's favorable for all. We can also help to begin plans on affordable housing at the same time. I mean, these are just ideas that I have. I'm not saying that, you know, there aren't flaws in them, but I think, I think there's definitely potential. You know, I think this, this town's ripe for, you know, improvements. I think there are some things that are going very, very well for the town. I love that it's a little sanctuary. But we're not going to be able to keep all the people out. And whether or not they come and spend their money here is really a choice that we can make. You know, definitely open to helpful suggestions on how that all can, you know, come out, come, come together. And, you know, if we can. But those are just some ideas that I've had. That's
Okay, so if I were to capture it, it would be, one, you have to attract the businesses, and then somehow spread out additional taxes across the businesses to absorb, if I were to kind of to capture that in order to increase revenues. Is that, would that reflected correctly?
Yeah, so I actually haven't done the math, but I think Summit County sales tax is slightly higher than it is in Netherlands. If I'm not mistaken, I think they're a little, they're slightly closer to 10% or just over. So.
That'd be cool.
But yeah.
And so then with the housing piece, because that's another big thing, right? And so what are your ideas in order to solve that problem? The affordable housing?
See, that's a, that, that's a, again, that's kind of a problem that I, I just started to crack myself. Again, the cap rates that I look at are totally different than the big players that can afford chunks of land in Netherlands. What I looked at in Omaha, Nebraska was, you know, yeah, more beds, more heads. If I can get a duplex, I have one roof to maintain. If I can get a fourplex, I have one roof to maintain. I get four separate streams of revenue from that one roof, though. So I think that scales well. I think it scales nicely. I don't have the kind of revenue, or I don't have the kind of financial backing that it would take to, to look into multifamily in Netherlands. But I believe that you know, you have to, you have to look at it in terms of density. I mean, how much, how many You know, you have to, you have to look at it in terms of density. I mean, how much, how many people can you put into a single building safely? Is, is the question, I think, you know. Summit County has a place called the, the Terrace. I don't know if you're familiar with Breckenridge, um, like on Airport Road, they have a place called the Terrace and they, and they pack in. Operations folks for bail resorts there. They're able to do it at a very modest. Margin, so they don't make a huge amount of money, but. It's very affordable for the operations folks there. And so, and it's right off the bus line, which makes it, um, super convenient. You know, I think if you, if you work operations in, in Breckenridge, you can't typically afford insurance or a car. So, um. You know, I think proximity to business is, is key, but also density of. You know, the, the amount of people that you can put safely in a single place is really important as well. So. You know, I have to, um, Mr. Howie Place, I know that Netherlands has some. Pretty. Strictly thing, you know, in those drains, I think, you know, there's a lot of discussion to be had. But proximity to town, I think is key. Proximity to this, to the ski resort is key. And, uh.
I'll stop there and let other trustees comment or ask questions.
Quick question on your question. What's commercial tax when you say it that way? You say that term. I don't know what that means. Sales tax and what's commercial tax?
Sorry, yeah, that, that was, I think, maybe what I, what I meant, um, when we were talking about commercial. Be more along the lines of, um, sales tax. I know that, um. There's a broad, there's a broad spectrum when it comes to. How businesses are charged in terms of, you know, building PIFs. Sewer, those sorts of things, um, already. So, uh, yeah, it would be mostly. Tax from revenues generated. You know, people spending money in town when they come through here. Be my, my thinking.
Okay, thanks. Go ahead, um, Tanya and Jesse, what questions do you have?
Well, yeah, I have a question. Uh, first of all, I want to thank you for stepping up. You were the only person in our community that did, um, and you haven't been here very long. I'm wondering, uh. One, why, what's the intrinsic motivation, if there is one? Behind wanting to, because you know, you're talking about the volunteer time, I mean. You will probably hit that max just from meetings unless we can scale this down. So it's going to be a little bit more volunteer time for you. I'm wondering. Is there something specific you're hoping to be a catalyst for or to help influence? Or is it just? You want to get into this for any other? I'm just curious why.
Yeah, I did actually have a chance, um, to, when I was speaking with Nicole, to kind of figure out exactly what role. Needs to be filled with this particular. Appointment. And, um. I, I, you know, I, I don't. Unfortunately have much background or much to offer in the way of, um, I believe, um, that the previous, um, member. Was taking care of a lot of transportation, um, sort of research and, and, um. And recommendations. Um, I don't have a lot of background or experience in that. I just have to be perfectly transparent with that.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of us don't have any experience in any of that either, so. No problem.
But the. Yeah. Oh, I can imagine. I mean, it's, and, and it's not that I have endless time to research and, and get up to speed quickly. On this stuff either. So again, full transparency there.
Well, I just hope that when it comes to, you know, voting. You know, I, I know. You know, you, the vote can impact for years. How the path of town goes. The trajectory that it's going to go on. So I know, I don't have a lot of time either. And I don't think any of us do. That's the biggest problem with this. System. Uh, just, just hope that. Do take the time to realize the influence that we do have here doing this. And I, again, I. You're running unopposed. We're happy to have you and thank you very much for stepping up and I hope you just. Think real hard about it, you know, when you get in here, like how. A thought of yours can actually continue on for years to come, so. For good or bad.
No, I appreciate that, Tanya. I think, um. That kind of does touch on exactly why I didn't throw my hat in the ring as well. I felt compelled to move out of a town that I'd been in for some time. For health and safety reasons. I, I, I didn't feel at home or welcomed by, um, some of the moves that the town. Made and, um, I won't mention any names or any municipalities. But, um, you know, I'd like to call net home for quite some time and, um. So, yeah, I do realize that there's a lot of responsibility in, um, in this particular role. I also know that. You know, we, we can't take ourselves too seriously either. We do represent. A small fraction of the town. I think the town can, you know, raise their voice and override us, I, I believe.
Not easily.
Maybe not easily. Yeah, I could see that for sure.
Obviously, they don't care that much because you're literally the only person who's willing to take that time. And again, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Just a real quick, can you clarify what you mean by having us not take ourselves too seriously? Because I think some folks on the board would say, well, this is a serious, to kind of like what the things that Tanya was bringing up, this is a pretty serious job. It, it, it has ramifications for years and you said that on the call with me as well. And so I thought I'd just take a time to, to clarify. What you mean by that.
Well, I think. For a lot of reasons, you know, you, we do have to really, you know, weigh our, the consequences of our decisions and actions. As responsible citizens. Just as much as, you know, people who are members of a board, um, make decisions like, like, um, the Board of Trustees does. But I also feel very, very firmly as I get older. That nothing is going to be as important to me as the relationships that I build. When I look back, never going to care as much about an investment that I lost money on. As I would care about a really close friendship that maybe I, you know, I, I damaged. And, um. And so, the way I see it is. I wouldn't take this role if I felt that I was going to be stepping into a situation where I was constant, constantly. Creating enemies or. Building an ego that made me too difficult to be around. You know, my, my friends and loved ones are, are definitely. Reason why I do a lot of the things that I do. And so relationship building and not breaking. Is important to me. So I think, you know, when I say I don't want to take myself too seriously. I guess what I mean is I don't want to get, let my head get so big that. You know, any of the things I do in this world. Make me somehow important or better than, you know, my friends and neighbors around me. So I guess, you know, to clarify, I think that's a, that's a fair thing to, to clarify. You know, I don't, I don't take. The decisions that you guys make lightly. Like I said, uh, some decisions that were made in, in one of the towns that I lived in. Really shaped my decision to move out of that town. I probably could have retired there. But, uh, you know, I just, uh. I, I, I do, I do see. Why you might not want somebody who would take this, this role too lightly. Or at least you'd want to clarify, uh, whether or not that's the case. So thank you for allowing me to clarify.
No problem.
Jesse?
Thank you, John. I appreciate you putting your name forward and. You know, would, uh, it would be nice to see you, uh. Have to duke it out with some other candidates a little bit. However, I'm, I'm, I'm super pleased with your. Offer of joining and volunteering. It is a paid position, by the way. It's not volunteer, so. It's probably about the lowest pay rate you've ever had or will ever have, but it's still, it's paid, so. You can at least, um, not have it count against your volunteer hours.
Thanks. Yeah, I hear, I hear the mayor gets double my pay, though.
Probably works about four times as hard, but yeah.
I would imagine.
You know, John, I guess, just trying to think about anything I would. Ask you other than, you know, things you've already talked about, but, um. I would say, you know, if you were to just try to bake it all down to the essence. Of, you know, some core values that you might be wanting to lead with from your own presence and the way you show up. What, what would you say are sort of like, um, what's your agenda from sort of a, a values? Uh, standpoint in terms of, um, what do you feel like you can bring to the board and to this role of leadership that will be good for our community?
That's a great, that's a really good question, Jesse. I think, um. In terms of leadership. One of the things that, uh, really draws me toward, to Netherlands is, uh, what I've seen already in terms of momentum. I, I don't think I would have even considered throwing my hat in the ring if I didn't see a lot of hope building in this community. And a lot of positive momentum. I remember visiting a few trails. About eight or maybe even 10 years ago. Some of those areas were trashed. I mean, I couldn't believe what had taken place. Um, just. It was almost like a bomb had gone off in some of these, some of these places that people have been long-term camping in. And I've just seen this tremendous move of community involvement to really beautify and clean up the area. You know, as a member of the volunteer fire department, seeing all the mitigation around Mud Lake just over the last year has been tremendous. I think people care about each other in this town. I think that they genuinely want. To maintain the beauty of the, uh, open space in addition to, um, you know, seeing some vibrant town growth. And, um. I, again, don't claim to know everything or even pretend to know half of what it probably takes to, to be. Super competent in this role, um, yet. But I like to think of myself as a person who, um, doesn't run away from a chance to help improve and, um. And make things better. So. If I can keep myself healthy, I think I'd be, uh, you know, a good person to maybe step in and. Roll my sleeves and help out where, where it needs to, needs to happen. So, um, again. You know, I want to be totally transparent with you, Jesse. I, I don't know squat about. Some of the most important parts of this particular role that Karen filled and. It sounds to me like she put a tremendous amount of heart and, uh, time and effort into. Into the work that she did. And, uh, for that, I think we should all be grateful. So it's big shoes to fill, I think, already. So, you know. Needless to say, I didn't know what I was stepping into when I put my hat in the ring and I'm feeling a little, a little intimidated. And again. I just want to, um, kind of emphasize that I, I really. Don't know that I'll have the time that it takes to, to get up to speed. So. I'm not saying that I'm withdrawing the, um, I'm not withdrawing the, uh, application, but I'm also realizing that it's a pretty humbling. You know, situation to be in, so. So I hope it's a good fit, but I don't, you know. I don't pretend to know, uh, for sure if it really is.
Thanks, John. Thanks, Jesse. Um. Yeah, I, I just want to state one thing. I don't think whoever fills this role. Is expected to take over everything Karen had done. She had her skill set, she had her motivation and she did a great job with it. It's not like we're saying, welcome aboard, you must do everything Jack Karen did. That's, well, that's just not how it really works. We'll, we'll all have to, um, pick up the different pieces of things. That, that were being done by Karen as well as, you know, just really figure out our own strengths to move ahead and, and, and. And make use of the seven people that are stepping up to do this. So it's, yeah, I just want to clarify, there's no like, here's your new job description kind of thing. Obviously, the job description i- is, you know, goes, goes above and beyond what she did as well and that, you know, all of us are involved with different. Might have different responsibilities, if you will. Um, I guess the main thing I want to focus on with you, it's good to meet you today and, um. And I think the thing that's coming up for me the most is just. Trying to get sense maybe from the other trustees, you know, I think they can give you a better sense than I can. Of, of the time commitment, I, I, one thing I'm, I think everyone knows, or, or, you know, the trustees know, I, I am. Interested in bringing us back to what, where it was, which was just two meetings a month. And, you know, this optional third as needed, I kind of, they told you, I kind of regret that I start, I'm starting our year by doing this work session with the DDA next week. It'll be valuable, but like, it's kind of like starting off on the wrong foot and that we're meeting three times, but, uh, it's not that one. I feel like, it's not the, you know, by any means, I feel like it's slacking to me to twice, twice a month. I feel like it's, it's sustainable to me twice a month. And, and I know the people have been doing this longer, are, are, you know, getting burned out. And I want a lot of, I, I want, I would love to have had. 10 people, you know, that we're interviewing tonight, but I think people are intimidated by what they see maybe just too much to bite into and, and, um. I, I want people who have full-time jobs and full-time families to be part of the makeup of the trustees ongoing. So, um. I, uh. Part of my goal is to get us back to two meetings a month, you know, and occasional work session. But I guess I would ask, you know, the other trustees, Jesse. Jesse, Tanya, you know, who's been doing this longest, Jesse and, and Nicole, to give you a better sense of what a trustee. Timeframe is, and then trying to tie it back into like two or three meetings a month.
Sure, I can, I can go first.
Really, it's Tanya. You know, we, we did two meetings a month with occasional work sessions for the whole time and it wasn't until. The police situation came up that we added that extra meeting. And then it was just seemed like one thing after another that we just kept having to, had extra meetings. And so I'm all for. Us trying to take care of stuff in our regular meetings so that we can, um. Realize, okay, every other Tuesday, twice a month, Tuesday is going to be. Your evening's pretty much going to be sucked up to this. It might go as late as 11:00. Even later, if there's things they have to hash out, but. You know, I think the minimum is that and potentially another meeting once a month. And then. Everything extra that I off, really don't have much time for myself. And I don't think most of us do. It's always welcome, but not necessary.
Well, there, there is the commitment of, of, uh, you know, being a liaison to a, a.
Right, to one other meeting a month, depending on the. Group you go into. Uh, what was Karen was the planning commission, so I would imagine that's probably where. John's ending up. Who knew? I don't know.
Potentially. I think, I think we talked to everyone and, and decide what people want to do, but, um, potentially. Potential. Hey, um, I think one is once a month, you know, it's once a month on a Wednesdays, I think.
Yeah, I mean, it's not too bad, John, as far as I'm concerned. I mean, I have a. A growing business in town and a young family and I try to snowboard and ski and, um, and do the BOT. And, um. It's, uh. I kind of try to design and build my life based on. Inspiration and I, I feel that if I try to do things that I. Um, inspiration and I, I feel that if I try to do things that I feel inspired by, like my family and my business and. And the BOT that I have energy and time for everything and um. You know, I think, I kinda wanna, I mean, Nicole and Tanya, if you guys wanna chime in on how much time you're putting in, but I, I feel like I wanna. Challenge you, John, a little bit right now, um. I gotta tend to my fire real fast, the, the coals fell down, so Nicole, you go and.
Okay, I'll go, I'll cover you. Um, sure, so just like, you know, Tanya and Billy have articulated, um. This meeting could be three to four hours and then you've also got um two to. I'm, I'm, you know, I'll just speak for myself, it's a, it's a good two to three hours to prepare for this meeting sometimes, just reading through it and I'm not. You know, I'm trying to not be like super detailed or anything, but I am trying to do, be due diligence. In making sure that I know the issues, I've researched some of it. Um, and so, you know, there's, there's, there is some good two to three hours in prep, um, that I will put into just reading and making sure I know. Um, if I have a one-on-one with Miranda, that's another hour. Um, I usually try to meet with her a couple of times a month. Um, if I have a, a meeting or a phone call with Jesse or with Eric or with Billy, right? I mean, those are things that happen during the week because, you know, we're kinda, kinda trying to come up with ideas or whatnot. Um, and then as Tanya rightly said, there are our liaison appointments. The sustainability board for me is two to two hours every month. So depending on the week, and I, and I just wanna be very transparent, you know, depending on the week, it's anywhere between. Five, six hours to twelve, but. Like, I recognize that you have a lot of other volunteer projects out there. This is mine, right? This is, this is my baby, this is my sole volunteer project that. Um, I just make sure, you know, and I don't, and I don't really, would I, my other projects, I will give maybe money to instead of my time. But this is the thing that I give my time to, so, um. And I know Billy is really intent on not making, you know, on trying to pull back on the meetings, but the reality is. Going into the new year, we do have three meetings scheduled per month right now. If we can pull those back, great, but you also just need to know, like, that's just kind of a reality right now.
And to clarify, though, that we have three meetings scheduled in January and we have three meetings kind of, you know, scheduled. But, but, but the second Tuesday is a, you know, placeholder really for work sessions. But, you know, I'm trying to be, you know. Optimistic and realistic, but yeah, I mean, you know, ideally, I think. If I, you know, if, if I can guide this, you know, and we need to have these work sessions, I'd love it to be no more than once a quarter, but that's, you know. That's what I like, you know, or, or less, but. Too many, you know, but we, you know, we, we, undeniably, we have two meetings, three meetings in January.
Hey, um. Uh, Billy, what is our process here for, um?
My, my, my process is for you guys to give him as much information. You were starting to challenge him, so I'd like you to continue with that. Um, cause I, I think, uh, what, what I see is the big thing for J- for John deciding if he can do this, so. I just wanna give him as much honest. And then we'd move forward.
So I wanted to offer a little bit of a challenge to John, um, and with all due respect and. I enjoyed meeting with you, John, and I've really enjoyed sort of the opportunity or, you know, the, the idea that you might fulfill this role. And yet, um, I advocated for having an election, not making an appointment, so. Um, you know, the, I was outvoted in the board and I went, you know, I'm happy we're here now. Um, however, my initial thought was that we should have someone go and, and win, win the population, the popular vote. And, um, you know, as things have played out, I've been real happy that you're presenting yourself and I felt like. I could work with you and I still do and, um. I guess, you know, we're trying to pick a good candidate, so you'll kinda be accountable to us a little more so than. You know, those of us who won an election are a little bit more accountable to the, to being voted in. Whereas we're trying to pick out you and say, okay, you, you'd be a good one to fill this role, so. We're trying to make a good choice at this point, so it just comes down to us rather than the popular vote. And one of the things I feel like we're doing here with politics and with governing is. Convincing one another, our fellow trustees to uh. Vote on something and, um. You know, when I make an argument, you know, I'm trying to make the arguments, I think we should vote yes for something or no or this or that. And, you know, part of my role within the board as I see it is to articulate my, my arguments. And, and underline them, you, you know, build them on a foundation of, of inspiration like I talked about, you know, feeling inspired to create something. Great for our community. But ultimately, I'm, I'm making arguments and I'm trying to. Tell my fellow BOT members why I think they should vote along the lines of how I feel on the matter at the moment. So I feel like at this point, um, I want you to. Show me how you'll be a good BOT member and to be enabled to um convince me to vote for you, to get this appointment. Basically, um, because. I can't quite feel it, you know, I, I wanna feel it and I've heard a lot of words and a lot of. Y- your mind processing the, the, the prospect, but I, I wanna, I wanna feel it and, and feel moved. To, to vote and to appoint you, cause I don't want you to, I don't wanna put, put you in this position and then have it not work out for you and, and uh. And you just flutter out after a couple of months, you know, and so. Uh, I would rather tell my, my fellow BOT members, hey, I wanted somebody who I can. I could really believe in and I don't wanna vote for John at this point, is kinda. You know, what I'm toying with and I want you to, to push me one way or the other because. Like I said, I like you, I think you could be great, but I, I wanna feel it from you. I want you to convince me to, to vote for you. That's my challenge. Or maybe it's not the right move, maybe, you know, maybe you can feel that and know that right now.
No, I appreciate that. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
It's working. Play here for some reason, I think it might be my connection. Um, no, it's a fair point, Jesse, and I. Totally res- that went about doing things that inspire you really resonated with me. You know, I spent the first, um, very early part of my life, um, really, like, you know, like. I, um, it's different conditions. Most people that I, I spend my time with these days, including my kids, fortunately. Uh, they grew up in very good circumstances and, um, going to good schools and, and enjoying good things in life. And it took a lot of effort, I mean, it took, uh. Took a lot of blood to, to, uh, I think the metaphor is the rocket is ninety percent of its fuel. Getting out of the atmosphere and then the other ten percent just maintaining. Um, it's uh, trajectory, um. Uh, that's kinda what it feels like getting started and like grow up in abject po- poverty. So a lot of the, a lot of that feeling of being inspired and being motivated for me early in life was really fear, fear-based. Um, so the first time in my life, I'd say in the last five years. Been the first time in my life that I've had the time to relax and not be driven by some sort of cortisol-based motive. And so I have been also speaking things that inspire, that's kinda why, you know, I do some of the other stuff that I do, um. I love to mountain bike as well and uh, and backcountry skiing, snowboarding those sorts of things. And those are, those are big draws, um, this community and, um. You know, I'd like to continue seeing that be accessible and available freely, um, to all of us. And so I think that might be in addition to affordable housing, but also, um. Maintaining some of the more, um, uh, freely available, um, natural beauty. That we have around us, um, accessibility and those sorts of things. Can be taken away just as quickly as you can find them in this country and, uh, and so I guess, you know. I don't know what the role really consists of, Jesse, I'm still, still forming my opinion on that. I, I, uh, I agree with you. Like, you, you're, you're pinpointing exactly what I've been pinpointing in, in just the last few conversations that I've had is that there, there are some. Um, there's some deeper aspects to this that, uh, you know, are very, uh, humbling. Um, I've never really backed down from a challenge, but I've tried my best in the past to really clearly understand. All the rules of the game of the challenge that I'm, that I'm undertaking and, um, and I'm, I'm still a little. Uh, yeah, I, I'm still a little fuzzy on exactly what the expectations are gonna be, um, but I think. I think number one, the thing that really motivates me the most. Is really forming the, um, the relationships around the cause that I think. Is in the heart of most of the people that I've met. Um, I would say all the people that I've met that are involved in this board of trustees. Is, uh, you know, to maintain the good life that, uh, that people have up here. So, in, in, in Netherlands, I should say, I'm actually in Boulder right now, but, um, but yeah, I think, um, that's exciting to me. It's exciting to be part of that and, and to see how I might be able to help out, um. But it's a little bit like feeling like I'm joining, uh, the basketball team. As a really good mountain biker, but ha- but the guy who has no basketball skills at all in this, in this particular, um, arena, you know. Um, so you're probably, you're probably tuning into some of that, uh, that feeling of hesitation that I, that I currently have, so. Um, fair point, uh, I don't, I don't voluntarily quit when I take something on, just so you know. Um, you know, if life. Uh, circumstances, um, change that forcibly, that's, that's a different situation, but, uh, yeah. That's a, that, you, you tuned into it very clearly, Jesse, I, I am feeling conflicted about this, so thank you. To like hash that out verbally.
So do you want us to vote you on tonight, onto the board?
Well, I, I'm also confused, cause I was fully expecting there to be at least one person, um, when they're happening. Um, I've actually met with somebody in town who was very interested, who was, that he was very interested in taking on the role. And I would have loved to hear, heard a little bit more, but, you know, it's again, it's a time thing, I don't think I've had of, I don't think I've had time. For conversation with anybody just yet. But, uh, yeah, so, um, yeah, I'm kinda saddened that he's not here as well. Because I think he would've been a great candidate to really see, you know. Cause I feel like he and I were, were aligned on, on many things and if we had the ten to fifteen hours a week put into it. I would have willingly, um, stated my support of him being in this role. Uh, but again, if you guys are thinking that. I think I can get up to speed, um, I know I can, but I don't think right away. And so I don't know what the expectations or the needs are, um, in the next three months. Of, of the team and if, if you guys feel like I'd be slowing the process down rather than helping to usher it along. Yeah, I mean. I, 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 yeah, Jesse, I, I feel, I feel very, very confident about being able to dedicate five hours a week to this one.
You can row, row the boat in pace with us for, until you know where you wanna steer.
Well, that's the thing is, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm definitely not a conflict-driven individual. I, I'm not afraid of, of, um, being, uh, considered controversial, but don't seek it. So I don't think I would, my whole feeling is that I would be. A willing participant who's not here to stir anything up. Or more or less, maybe have an open mind to learn, that's a very. So. I don't know if that's convincing enough, but, uh, that's, that's my feeling on it right now.
I, I have a quick logistical question. I mean, I noticed when we were gonna meet, you said, you know, in the evenings in Boulder, um, and you're in Boulder now. Do you live here or do you live in Boulder?
I, I live in Netherlands, but I fish for, dress, um, I do, I do work. And, um, I have a, I have a couple of different things that are happening in Boulder right now, so I have a son who lives here. So I am in Boulder quite frequently, but I do live permanently in, in.
What, how do we, what are we doing next, Billy?
Any other question from the board? So the question before the board is, does the BOT want to appoint John Mountain to fill the vacancy as our seventh trustee?
Are we discussing amongst ourselves and John has to listen?
Yeah, I think at this point, we'll, we'll close the public, um. Import, you know, we just, ju- just bring it back to the, to the, to the four present trustees only, um. And, and let's just, just our thoughts.
Fair enough. Thank you, guys. It was, it was good seeing you, some of you again and meeting the rest of you, so have a great day.
You too. You're welcome to stick with us. No need to talk anymore.
Nicole. Yeah, sure, um, well, having been the most recent person who was appointed, I know that going through this process is. You know, wild and feels crazy and you're just like, oh my gosh, they're totally talking about me and how I'm going to fit and. You know, you're counting the votes of who's voting against you or who's not and, and so it's, it's, it's a wild experience. And I was actually in person for my, um, appoint and appointing, appointing and. Um, it was even more wild because, you know, I had come out of left field, um, like yourself, I was not. Really well-known, um, but had been listening for a while, so again, like, uh, Tanya had mentioned before, I appreciate you, um, stepping up. Oh, cute, Jesse, um, and, and so here's my concern and I've, and it's a big concern, the fact that you're on the fence. Uh, you know, five hours, I get it. But you've gotta be prepared to do more on some of those weeks, I'm sorry. And I want somebody who has a degree of ambiguity with them, you kinda have to have that a little bit. You have to have a tolerance for ambiguity, you're not, not, we, there is no, there's not a huge, you know, training list, there's not. You just kinda have to jump in and go with it and, and, and find your, your path and find your way. Everyone is very supportive, everyone is willing to help, but my concern right now is the ability for you to dedicate the time. Um, even over the next couple of months and for you to, um. You know, to be able and, 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 yeah, I mean, it is a commitment, it is, it's, it is a serious position. And at the same time, you know, I, I do appreciate your, um, yeah, your willingness and your stepping up, but that's my concern.
Totally fair, totally fair and no, no hard feelings either way and, but I will, I will say one thing, Nicole. Um, I actually did take, I took a little bit of, um. Leave, uh, for lack of a better term, um, in preparation for this. Um, and was anticipating at least for the first month there to be a ramp time. Um, I unfortunately just cannot say after this, after the month of January, that I would have more than five hours. To dedicate to it, period.
That's okay, that's okay. We want you to be honest with yourself, we wanna be honest with you and. You know, it's like, there, there are gonna be these positions that open up in the future again. I mean, my term is only a year and a half, maybe you're, you're coming in and you're saying, alright, it's John Mountain time now, which. Everyone wants to know, is that your real last name? Because that's just ridiculous for you to be, have that name. Everyone wants to know, is that your real last name? Because that's just ridiculous for you to be have that name and live in Netherlands.
That's a good campaign slogan right there.
I know, it is. I'm telling you.
That is so funny. Uh, you know, I I am the only actually living John Mountain that I know other than one uncle. Um, so yeah, I have a funny thing. Yeah, my uh, and if really the only of of my family who lives in a mountainous region. I had an aunt who was a chamanee for a bit, but that's it.
It's brilliant. It's wonderful. Yeah.
Doesn't make sense, but yeah.
But two are, you know, your heart and your soul, like. That's my biggest concern, John, and you know, for you to say that I don't know, I could do more than five. Like that for me, I start to worry about you and your burnout rates, um. Mental health, we all need to kind of just check in with each other every once in a while, making sure we're doing okay. And so that for me is my biggest concern.
Well, this is Tanya. I'm personally willing to um. Make a motion to uh, accept his nomination if if he's into it. I think uh, as. He gets more interested in the process, there may be more time that opens up. In his schedule, um, that happens to all of us to a degree, um, and. I mean, I don't really know if what the other alternative would be here is we wait for somebody to show up that has more time. In the meantime, if we do an election, it's like three or four months from now. Uh, honestly, in three or four months, if he decides to resign because it's too much time, then we can put it back up for a nomination and try to get more people. I am hundred percent willing to give John Mountain a chance if he wants to go for it. I don't think any of us are like overflowing in time and we make it happen. And nobody's expecting to fill Karen's shoes. She maybe tried to do too much because she burned out after six months or whatever. So it's almost better if you just maintain what you can do and make conscious choices and decisions. Um, and don't try and take on too much. I it's, I think it's better to stay within your limitations and like. Fully understand um. Where you're coming from, so but I'm all for. Making a motion if anyone else wants to second it.
Billy, just as a clarification, what are um. If we were not to move forward with John Mountain, is it, you know, what what's what what are the? I know we have sixty days to fill it, so we'd have to open it up for reelection or for, you know, getting more appointment.
So I want to clarify, you don't have sixty days to fill it. You have sixty days to decide how you want to fill it. And so. There are two options before the Board of Trustees. Let me turn on the camera. There's two options before the board where you can. Decide you want to keep going with the appointment and put it out again or choose to have an election. That could be a conversation that's held tonight under this discussion, or you could choose to table that for the seventeenth and talk about it at that meeting.
Okay, gotcha.
Miranda's door is right out of her mouth. February first is uh, is the sixtieth day because um, Aaron um. Resigned on December third, I believe. So um, we would, what we would need to do is 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 make a decision. Tonight, or I'd be more apt to to push it to the seventeenth, uh, we can discuss that, um, where we have. Hopefully hopefully six people present, um, and decide how we want to um. Proceed appointment or election. Um, if we if we were to appoint. Um, and Miranda's where I do need her helping it. Uh, like if we were to decide to point tonight, um. And we wa- want, you know, decided we wanted to put it out again and have more options, um. We we would either need to then bring that back and make a decision on the seventeenth or have a special meeting. Before, because our next scheduled meeting is the seventh. So my sk- my my question to you is um. Would that be something, it'd be more about, you know, putting an application out there and then. And then having applicants again on the seventeenth, or is it really more about making a decision on the seventeenth and then? And then and then proceeding from there?
Yeah, I think the the challenge you're gonna have is like, say you decide on the seventeenth, you want to keep going with appointment like. That's it. You made the decision, you're gonna need to appoint, because we'll end up past.
I got you.
The February third day where deciding today gives you a little more wiggle room. Like if you decided you wanted to keep going for applications, you could give it that twenty-one days. It still gives you space. You'd have to hold a special, we're all about no meetings, but you'd have to hold a special meeting to meet the applicant. But it gives you a little more wiggle room if you made that choice today.
Does it have to be twenty?
No, that's just typical. You could also choose to shorten that. You could put it out, say tomorrow. And then have applications due next Friday for consideration on the January seventeenth meeting.
Uh, honestly, are there anybody else who wants to do this? This has been out for two weeks already.
We heard there were others.
Someone just missed the deadline or something? Why didn't we just extend the deadline? I mean. I'm just personally getting tired.
So I will tell you, no one, I may or may be kind of rumbled amongst the Board of Trustees. No one reached out to town staff stating. That they missed the deadline or they had intention. Peter gave an application to someone on Thursday, I think, right Macy, and like made it very clear. It was due the next day.
Yeah, they probably couldn't get their signatures or forgot. I.
Someone someone expressed interest to me and then the same person expressed that same interest to Tom. But when I asked that person.
Through with this, you know, I mean.
I also had a separate person, separate from the person you're talking about, um, express interest, um.
I didn't, they say their application ended in time.
Holidays, it was.
I'm not really sure what the opposition here is at this point. I mean, John seems like a nice guy. He says he's short on time. I can relate to that. Um, I don't know if you're gonna find that you're a unicorn. Unless you guys got him hiding and you're waiting to put him out and they missed their deadline and you guys are doing some kind of coup. I have no idea. I again am. Saying, uh, I don't know what the right verbiage is. Make a motion to accept his nomination for Board of Trustees.
So you're making a motion.
I am. I don't know if anyone's gonna second it. It sounds like everyone thinks there's something else, no, wings.
I'll second it. So Macy?
Alright, trustee Sterling?
No.
Trustee Corvalon?
Yeah.
May Billy?
Yes.
Trustee Severs?
I'd like to defer my vote to John.
If we appoint him, he'll be able to. I didn't know what to expect in this meeting, but uh, yeah.
I guess he's basically saying, if you don't want this, speak now. You know?
No, I get it.
Meetings go on and on for hours. It's a lot of this.
Or if you.
Sorry, go ahead.
I mean, if, you know, the board were to decide tonight to move forward with another, opening up the. The applicants again, um, that might give you some more time to feel things out. Get a little bit more of an idea from all the rest of the board members of what this looks like. Um, and see if there's any other competitors that come in. I. I get the sense that you're on the fence, you know, still, and I don't know if maybe some extra time would also help you out there. Um, I'm just kind of throwing that out there.
Probably what needs to happen is Jesse, unfortunately, you you need you need to probably vote. I think. And then, um, based on your vote, we just have our decision. Um, John Mountain is free to do what he wants with that or decision. So yeah, I guess. Yeah, a a real clarifier, Miranda.
Yeah, no, I was just gonna, sorry. Let me give my two cents here. I was just gonna say, I think Jesse should vote because John is not taking his oath. Tonight.
Of course.
John, that gives you two weeks. But I would argue, I would would say that if you, after leaving this, say there is that appointment, recommendation for appointment. You decide it's not for you, you let us know sooner or later so that we can start the process of whatever the next process is.
And a tide of motion fails, so it all comes down to me.
Um, yeah, I I have one quick question. Sorry, um, Miranda, is it? No, it's it's not about four people. Three would be a pass. It would be, okay, yep. It's it's up to you, Jesse. I just wanna step in real quick and just just say, um, regardless of, you know, how you guys vote. I still hope that uh, we maintain co- communication and contact. Um, so far, I've been super impressed with everybody that I've met. Um, and it's been good, it's been good starting new friendships through this. So. That's uh, that's that's not gonna change, that feeling of like, I don't hold a grudge for any.
Thanks, Jenna.
Thank you.
I'm gonna vote no.
Thanks for the votes, the the motion, the motion um, is denied, motion fails. So we have not, uh, we have not appointed anyone to speak then. And we were, I I think in Miranda, here's, um, we're gonna go ahead and plan to put this on the. January seventeenth agenda.
This board wants to.
I'd like him, I'd like to.
I don't want to talk about it tonight. We have other things. It's getting late and we should wait for Eric and Tom.
Right, um, the thing we would talk about is whether we would go ahead and open up application and and like Nicole said. Uh, you know, given Tom.
I think we should wait for Tom and Eric personally, but.
So that works on the January seventeenth meeting, what you're suggesting, Billy?
Yeah, so we would all, you know, um, we are virtual again, which means I don't know exactly who is attending. The um, um, but yes, we we could wait till the seventeenth, decide um. What we wanna, you know, whether we want to point or move to an election and have, you know, have more hopefully present for that meeting. I know Eric, Eric intends to be there. Today was an emergency. He he should, he would, otherwise, so. That works for me.
Can I say, can I say something to John? Um, John, that was really hard for me and I only voted that way because I'm not, I'm not feeling it. Not feeling moved to to appoint you and um. I wanted you to vote for me because if you said, yes, vote for me, I vote for me and vote for me, I will vote for you. However, I'm just not feeling it and um, I would like you to take however long we continue to delay. Uh, to to continue to put your name forward as long as you're feeling it. And I feel that you need more time to think about it or more time to ponder it or to shadow us or to spend more time with us in conversation. And get to know the role more better and then know where you stand on it so that I can feel you in in this. In your approach and um, and get aligned with you. Because I feel that you have a great mind and a great heart and and a great spirit here. I'm just not feeling that that you're committed. To the journey and I want to feel that way before I appoint you. So if we extend the deadline period. You know, I'd like you to continue to put your name forward and you're gonna have more voters here. It's not all gonna just come down to me and I may vote different the next time we consider you. So. If you really want it, don't go away.
Yeah, agreed. One hundred percent.
I really appreciate what Jesse just said and what you said earlier, yeah, I appreciate that. So. All that being said, thanks, John. We appreciate your time. I look forward to hopefully talking to you more in the next couple of weeks and um, let's go ahead and um. I have to go to the bathroom and take a five minute break.
Sounds good. Yeah, I'll I'll reach out. I I definitely want to circle back. Um, I'll find some time on some calendars and get back in touch with you guys. So thanks for having me. Yep, see you guys.
Five minutes, Billy?
See, yeah, five minutes, thanks.
Okay, thanks.
So I didn't really look at the timer. Are we at five minutes or? Close to. Jesse and Tanya, you guys back? Now we'll give a couple more.
Yeah, I'm back.
I see Tanya and.
Yeah, I'm back. You hear me?
I do. Yeah, I hear you, Tanya, and I see Nicole. You look like you're ready. Jesse, you back yet? Give Jesse another minute.
Yeah, I'm back.
Okay. Thanks, everybody. Thanks for through what was kind of a challenging process there with the last. Actually, I know we want to move into our next action item. Thank you in advance, Gerald. For utilities connection for eight seventy-nine County Road one twenty-eight West. So you don't mind, Miranda?
So tonight before you is a request for a parcel that is out of town to do a sewer and water connection. Gerald and Sharon Sutherland, who are the applicants, and Gerald is here, are interested in purchasing a vacant lot at eight seventy-nine County Road one twenty-eight West and they're planning to build a home there. This lot is currently located to the north of the Caribou Ridge subdivision and it's in unincorporated Boulder County. We have determined that there is a water and sewer connection in this area. There are two other users who currently pay into our system who are tapped into that. And so this applicant is looking to do the same. The alternative for the applicant is to install a septic for sewer and a well for water. Jerry had provided the email with DWR, Division of Water Resources, really outlining the challenges for you being able to do that well. And then, of course, the the interest, you know, instead of installing a septic is to be able to connect. Under the Netherland Municipal Code, Section thirteen fifty-eight A four, the Board of Trustees can approve an out-of-town user to connect to our service lines. That person will have to pay one hundred and fifty percent of the user fees, plant investment fees and tap fees. And I have outlined in this aim just how much that ends up coming out to be. The Utilities Department, we have Andrew Bliss here, Lead Utilities Operator, who can speak more to this. But as I stated, had noted that there is a main for water and sewer in the subdivision. We also checked with JVA and they confirmed that there is capacity to serve this lot. Chris Pelletier had also provided an email to prior parcel owners about that it would be possible to connect, but there would need to be engineered designs, easements that would need to be documented and that they wouldn't connect until the construction of the new home was completed. We currently feel that this is a request that should be approved. And again, I've outlined financial considerations. I'd love to just ask Andrew if there's anything else you wanna add and then, of course, give Jerry an opportunity to talk. Andrew, anything I missed?
I don't think you missed anything. Just to add, it seems like this was done right. It looks like JVA, our engineer, did the plans for the water main, fire hydrants and sewer main that serves this subdivision. And it it was constructed by a contractor that we we respect. So it seems like it's been all done right. Like you said, JVA has confirmed that we have capacity to serve this lot.
I have a question. How much would it cost to extend the line to their house on our end?
So there really isn't, and there's no need to extend the main. They're gonna need to tap in at their own cost, but the main is already up there. So there's no cost to town for them to connect.
Everything's there. There's, isn't there like a pump of something sorts that serves the Caribou Ridge area to bring the water up there? Is that how, how does the water get up to Caribou Ridge?
Yeah, there's a, there's a pump station in Sunnyside that pumps up to a tank in Caribou Ridge. And then there is a pump station at Caribou Ridge. I, in terms of the actual pressure zone, there's a line that doesn't go off of that pump station. I could confirm that whether it's connected to that pump station or not.
Well, I mean, is there any infrastructure that we have to do on our end to make it happen?
No, no, this, this, you know, I, you know, obviously I wasn't around when this was originally built, but it seems to me like this was all done right, that the developer kind of constructed this water main and sewer main to be able to develop these lots under the supervision of the town and the town and the town's engineer. The town has now taken over that water main and sewer main that was constructed and now residents can pay to tap into it.
Okay. And so despite the fact that it would be off the two thousand and twenty-two rates, the hundred and fifty percent will still, I think what you're saying, Andrew, it covers all of the costs and everything that we would, and Miranda, that we would supposedly have.
Yeah, yeah, and thanks for noting that. I I did not add that to my statement is the applicant is asking because he submitted his application in December. We just couldn't get it on the second meeting in December. He's asking that we honor the twenty twenty-two PIF rates, but still at about one hundred and fifty percent.
Okay.
Is this gonna be a home you're planning on living in or is it a a house that's gonna go on the market?
First of all, thanks, Miranda and the Board of Trustees for putting this on the agenda. We want to build a home and reside in it there in Netherland. We really like the area. We love the way it's such a beautiful area and the way everyone loves nature there. And we just kind of fell in love with it. We have family in the area as well. But we just, we just love it, you know, from what we've seen so far and would like to do that.
Any other clarifying questions from the trustees before we go to public comment? Okay, thanks. We'll go ahead. Public comments. If anyone has a public comment on this action. I'm not seeing any hands or hearing any voices. If you're talking and I'm talking, hit star six. Otherwise, we'll bring it back to the trustees for a final discussion and a motor, a motion. Any, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, it looks like, as Andrew said, it looks like a lot of homework was done previously. It's town staff is recommending, it's already being tapped into by a couple of other residents. I I personally don't see why we would prevent this from happening, but would love to hear alternative.
Is there any conceivable downside from town management point of view?
I'm going to say no, but I will defer to it. My feeling is no, because this system is already there. The main is already there. We have two other users connecting into it. I wouldn't be surprised if the fourth parcel eventually comes forward. I mean, we obviously took the system up there for a reason, so I think it's appropriate for people to tap in, but Andrew, I'll I'll defer to you.
Yeah, and I think this is, this happens, so I don't, I think this will happen, so I don't, I don't wanna say that it's a concern necessarily, but I think we just wanna make sure that the rules that the board sets for people connected to our water system will apply to customers outside of town, even though, you know, town, all of town code, my understanding won't apply, but we just wanna make sure that water system rules will apply. But but talking to Miranda, it sounds like that will happen.
What, what are the considerations for just annexing these parcels versus letting them tap in?
So I talked to Jerry about that. Obviously, the immediacy, we all know the annexation process takes an extraordinary long time. Now it will, where this is an immediate, and I think, Jerry, correct me if I'm wrong, you are looking for that confirmation that you can tap in before completing the sale of this property, right?
Yes, you know, we're just trying to to find a lot. There's not a whole lot of them in the area or a home. And so when we came across this one, there was some uncertainty regarding the water. And I did some of the research on to figure out what was going on with it and kind of came down to this, that it would connect. It could, if it could connect, it would be to the Netherland Town, Town Municipal System. And, you know, that's kind of all I know about it, other than that was where it was at, you know. Then it needed that to to basically have water and thus have a home. I don't think we would buy it without water.
You know, some people are up for a challenge, but no.
Yeah.
Is there any, is there any reason to annex into town if you get the water and sewer anyway and then you just?
Lower fees.
Kind of get most, most of the benefit. You got lower fees. So it's it's one hundred and fifty for the tap fees, but also for the, for the monthly bill as well?
Hundred and fifty for the PIF, the tap, the base and the usage.
And that, and I think. Right?
Say that again, Billy?
That's the minimum, reading the codes I read, minimum. And if we did anything, we go above and beyond. I'm just, I'm just making sure that that is known.
Thanks.
And then there is a request from the applicant too, I think, to apply for twenty twenty-two fees as opposed to twenty-three fees. Is that correct?
Correct.
So that's something that we need to consider as well?
That's one of the questions before us. Yep.
Yeah, I think there's, there's, there's really two, there's, do you approve it? And if you do, do you approve the twenty twenty-two PIF rates? And then the second question is, do you wanna charge one hundred and fifty percent all the fees or would you like to use a different rate?
And and just clarifying, the only, the only direction we get to go.
Right.
I would personally go for twenty twenty-three fees. It's twenty twenty-three.
What's your logic?
Well, the logic is building a well and a septic is gonna cost you close to one hundred and fifty thousand dollars or one hundred thousand dollars, so it's still cheaper. And you have consistent, you don't need maintenance and all the, it's a, it's a good deal for them and I feel like it's good, it's a win-win for everybody. I feel like this is like kind of helping.
Twenty twenty-three.
It's twenty twenty-three. We're doing them a favor, really. That whole neighborhood isn't part of Ned. They should have been annexed if they wanted to be part of our facilities. They don't have the higher tax rates. They don't have, they have a lot of benefits. With their building codes are gonna be a lot easier than the building codes for town and ned. A lot of Bennies for not being in ned yet getting the water in the sewer is like the only real benefit for being in town and ned, unless you wanna run for government. So I just don't see why not, you know?
Okay. I have a question. If they were to go annex at some point, the only thing that would really change would be the, the, the monthly fees, right? The monthly rates.
Correct.
For the big dollar items all happen as an out-of-towner. Okay.
I was just doing a quick scan. It looks like the differences on a whole between the twenty twenty-two rates and the twenty twenty-three rates maybe come to about eleven, twelve thousand. Is that correct, Gerald?
The combined difference is about fourteen thousand dollars. And the reason we're asking for this for this year is one, obviously, because we asked in two thousand and twenty-two to put it on the agenda.
But couldn't get in, you know?
And and two is because I'm sure you guys are aware, but the cost of everything in the area is pretty much becoming almost unsustainable, you know, to try to build a home there. And, you know, I'm doing whatever I possibly can from a feasibility standpoint to actually try to build a home. And the way I, I'm a finance guy and the way I start with it is everything that I consider upfront has to be whatever is possible. And, you know, if it's possible that we could get it into two thousand and twenty-two, then that's what I wanted to do. You know, if it's possible, I can get it for a price that I can actually afford to build a house. That's what I wanna do. Because, you know, hey, it's, it is not inexpensive these days to build a home, you know, as you guys know. I mean, it's, it's very expensive.
Have you settled on a design and a square footage and all that yet or that's next?
Well, I've talked to Boulder County. It is in unincorporated Boulder County, but it's adjacent to Netherland. And, you know, they've given me a PSM, I believe it's called. And, you know, it had, the property had a design that someone, the first owner that bought it. But it's, the, the, the determination letter has expired, so I've gotta start that process over again, you know, with them. But I did have a preliminary discussion, I think a pre-application discussion with Boulder County on it to see what they would allow me to do there. And, you know, they felt like it was possible that it would move forward since it did have already a lot of the information about it, you know, from the previous applicant back in two thousand, I think nineteen or eighteen.
Yeah, I, I do wanna put out that, just two things that it, you know, it is what it is. We were really busy and, and, you know, you, you had your ducks.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 no.
In a row in two thousand and twenty-two and we couldn't get you on our agenda. And then also, I, I could be wrong, Jesse, you probably know better than I. I think building outside the county is actually more expensive, is it not, than building in town or at least takes longer?
I think it's a lot easier in town. This has been my experience.
Yeah, that's definitely what I understand. So, so there, there's a burden already building in the county and definitely, because they take a lot longer. I just wanted to make sure those, those kind of were clarified. Any, what other comments we got from trustees? And, and.
Go ahead. I don't, I mean, I, I don't see any downside, really. I suppose I sort of, I don't know why I have this sensibility, but I kind of feel like I want the parcels that are using the town utilities to be part of the town. So I'd like to invite or encourage Mr. Sutherland to consider annexing, should you move forward with this whole deal and I don't know that they're, yeah, fifty percent, it's a really arduous process to go through annexation. I don't know fifty percent or one hundred and fifty percent of the fees is, is really worth it, but I don't know. From a finance standpoint, maybe, you know, better than me on that. I don't know what other incentives we have other than. Yeah, but I'm, I'm fine with sharing our, our utility with, with Boulder County resident, I suppose.
Well, a couple of things, you know, I'm, I'm literally, I'm an outsider coming in and I don't wanna step on anybody's shoes. There are four, four other or three other owners in this little subdivision. And I didn't really wanna have to push them one way or the other to try to complete the purchase process. And, you know, towards annexation, for example, you know, kind of come in and say, hey, guys, if you want me to join you, you've got to annex. You've gotta be annexed. So I didn't wanna kind of get in the middle of that as an outsider. I'm just trying to make friends with some new neighbors and come to, come to a beautiful area, you know, that I really think is an amazing area, really do. We, we think, we think it's a great place to be and we'd like to be there if it's all possible. You know, and, you know, if in the future, you know, the town of Netherland grows, you know, and it's necessary that it grows, then, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm coming here because I like the town from what I've seen. Okay, we like it. And, you know, we would support the town in any way we can, you know, because I think it's, it's a great community. That's why we're wanting to move there, you know. And, you know, I know you guys got a tough job, you know, to to take care of a, a, a gem such as Netherland, you know. And we realize that and we would, we wouldn't try to stand in the way of you guys taking care of the town, you know. But at the same time, you know, we're faced with some extraordinary things out there in the, in the real estate market, as you know. And and we're just, and I'm just trying to piece it together for our family that we can, you know, build a place there, you know, and cross that line to get there, so.
I appreciate it. I, I wanna remind everyone on the board that annexation is definitely, you know, I think it's interesting to talk about what that would be in the future. But with a question for the board with this is do we, because as it is now, we have an out-of-town user who would like to start moving ahead on billing on their lot. Do we approve the applicant's request to connect the town's water and sewer system as an out-of-town user? If so, do we approve the applicant's request to pay the twenty twenty-two PIF rates? And if so. And if so, does the BOT want to charge a hundred and fifty percent of the PIF, tap and user fees or associated with it? Um, if I want to hear any other comments, I have some as well, and then we can move to a motion. Jesse, you're good?
Yeah, I'm good. I'd like to hear what you think.
Yeah, um, my thoughts is kind of looking back, actually, real quick, Nicole, Tanya, any comments?
No, go for it.
Um, so, um, the, the, the hundred and fifty, I mean, as for twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three, I, I, I do want to just at least own or at least can, you know, consider that, you know, they were ready to roll with us in twenty twenty-two and we just didn't have time to put it in our, our schedule. And I also would point out that the hundred and fifty percent that we charge, we are, you know, which is a state law and that actually it's code and that we charge for out of town users and not state level codes, um, that that helps recoup some of that loss. I mean, you know, I think it would, it'd be like, uh, yeah, fourteen thousand, um, dollar difference from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three. But it's also going to be, um, twenty thousand dollar difference, twenty-two thousand, it's like forty-five grand, I think, for the twenty-two, my fee. So, um, that it's, it's, we're making, we're, we're, you know, by going a hundred and fifty percent, we're getting a twenty-two thousand plus above a normal PIF rate. And, um, I think that kind of can be weighed, weighed over or, you know, to compare it to the fourteen thousand more we get if we went to twenty twenty-three. So I'm of the opinion, um, that we should approve this, uh, let, you know, connect, let them connect to our, this water system, water and sewer system, approve it at the twenty twenty-two rates and, and then stick with a hundred and fifty percent. Um, I'd like to make a motion that we, um, I like to make a motion, help me if I'm saying this wrong, because I don't have my word, but, but, um, that we approve this applicant's request to connect to town's water and sewer system as an out of town user at the twenty twenty-two PIF rates. And the hundred and fifty percent of the PIF, tap and user fees or, um, crew user fees.
I second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. And just to be clear, Macy, um, I'm sorry, Miranda, three votes is a yes, right? Okay, Macy, would you take the role, please?
Seevers?
Yes.
Trustee Sterling? Trustee Corvallon?
Yes.
And Mayor Billy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks for your patience, Gerald. I hope it was worth the wait.
Thank you so much, everybody. Appreciate it so much.
Jerry, I'd just like to clarify next step. So we do need to draft an agreement and our attorney will support with that and will work alongside Andrew here. We'll have you review that and that will have to come back for, to the Board of Trustees on their consent agenda, probably for official approval.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Gerald.
And I'm gonna leave if that's okay.
Oh, yeah.
You have to stay.
Thanks. I like your shirt, uh, Jesse. I got one.
Yeah, it's a good one. I love it.
Play the joy.
Yeah.
All right. Thanks. Thanks, everybody. Good night.
Thanks.
Good night. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Bye.
So at this point, we're going to move into discussion items. And we have two. We have the rights of nature resolution and then the indigenous people acknowledgement. So, um, with the rights of nature resolution, I do not know, I have not seen that, um, someone has joined us from this individual advisory board. So, um.
So I, I am prepared to present it, Nicole, unless you want to. Um, I'm prepared to present it. Yeah, I did make a request that a member of Sustainability Advisory Board be present. They are not. So I will do the best I can to get us through this. So bear with me. So tonight before you is the Rights of Nature Guardian Subcommittee Resolution. Does it take us back, back in twenty twenty-one, the BOT passed Resolution twenty twenty-two eleven, which recognized and implemented the legal rights of the Boulder Creek and the Boulder Creek watershed. Um, when that resolution was initially approved, uh, the BOT actually did not revise it and, and upon later reflection realized we needed to make some edits. So the official resolution for the rights of nature is twenty twenty-two eleven A. In twenty twenty-two eleven A, there is a reference to the need for a guardian and that wasn't really flushed out in that resolution. So what this resolution does is it calls for two members of the Sustainability Advisory Board to serve as those guardians. What their responsibility would be is to monitor the watershed and report back to SAB and the BOT on its status. They would provide quarterly reports as well as annual reports. Um, one of the things we realized in the, the original rights of nature is that we really needed to have our attorneys look at it and did not. So Attorney Madison and Attorney Lad looked over the resolution that's before you, offered some edits, but are comfortable with this twenty twenty-three oh four. Um, and SAB voted at their meeting on November twenty-eighth to recommend the BOT adopt it. And so the question before you is, really, do you have any questions for SAB? And, and SAB would be myself and Trustee Sterling at this point. And, um, if there was desire, I guess we'd look for direction on if you wanted us to bring this back at a later time to be an action item for adoption.
So, yeah, at this point, you know, it would open up for, uh, trustees to ask clarifying questions or, 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 or answer the questions that Miranda just asked. That's what I'll wait.
I don't want to be clarifying comments. I'm pretty familiar with it, so.
Do, do you actually have any more insights that you might share about?
Yeah, it really is to be able to, um, like Miranda said, to clarify some of the language, but also to, for the SAB to be able to appoint those two guardians. Um, that's, that's really what it's about because that was not flushed out and, um, and so, and, and then to be able to offer insight and, you know, the health of the watershed. Um, you know, how it's doing, any recommendations. We did have, one of the things that I did push back on the SAB about was, well, how is this going to get done? Like, is this going to require budget? Is this, you know, who, who, like what research centers or anything are you going to be asking in order to provide this insight? And, um, and so it was, you know, and so they had said, well, you know, we'll, we'll use the resources that we have, um, in order to provide, you know, the recommendations or the reports or, or whatnot. Um, but I just said, you know, if there is a request for budget in the future, that you just make that explicit and, you know, just be aware that, you know, that could be an issue. So, um, so, yeah.
Thank you. Any, any questions, Tanya or Jesse? Comments?
Not really.
No, not really.
Okay, I do. Um, so have, have they, um, outlined specifically what they mean by monitoring the watershed? Uh, like, like, what is that process? You know, you know, and, and, yeah, that's my first question for, for, so that's my first question. If you guys can't answer it, maybe, um, make a list of questions for them.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess, and I, Trustee Sterling, maybe correct, if you let me know. My feeling is maybe you table this until a SAB member can be present. I'd hate to speak on their. And, and that is a very valid question.
Yeah, and my, my other question and, and, and even concern is like, um, providing these quarterly reports. I mean, that, that looks easy here, but the reality is all these kind of reports and things. Committees and, and to-dos, um, they start to add up. And I know there's someone specifically on the SAB who really cares about this, but like, when, when, when motivation and this ebbs and flows, like, um, you know, what about these reports? Can they be counted on or whatever? So, yeah, I, I think it'd be great to have someone from the SAB. I'm cool with table in this and having someone from the SAB come back later and really give us some good meat.
Yep.
Recommend, because unfortunately, and, and Trustee Sterling, you tell me how you feel, is postpone this until February. That way at the January meeting, someone can make a commitment to be at the board meeting, since my emails went a bit unresponded to.
Oh, okay, gotcha. Yes. Yeah. And we actually have two interactions that were happening in January. We're talking about goals and we're talking.
Oh, that's right. Actually, do you want to talk about it on Monday?
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay, and then we can bring it back on the seventeenth.
Sounds good.
Does that work for you, Mayor Billy?
Bring this back on the seventeen?
Yeah.
Yeah, we could. It's super light.
Yeah.
And even if we're going to ask a bit about the appointment for the, yeah, it's, it's.
I, uh, my big question for this is, uh, you know, I'd sad members who do this report and all that, but like, you know, experts involved, that would be my question.
I agree. I think when it comes to monitoring the watershed, there needs to be some like expertise. And also continued legal, legal, um, approval of whatever they do. So I think we're good on that, right? You have a question? Do you have things for SAB to hopefully come up with?
It's just a discussion. So I guess you don't need to make a motion to table. So, yeah, that sounds great.
So we're done there and we'll move on. Um, if everyone's ready, keep going. Um, I'd like to go right into, um, our next aim, which is, um, I'm sorry, next discussion item on the Indigenous People Acknowledgement, the Declaration of Indigenous People Acknowledgement. Again, unfortunately, um, um, Atashna told us last minute she couldn't be here, um, unfortunately. So, um, I'd, I'd say Miranda and, and maybe Jesse, just seeing if we can kind of share the start this conversation again, after this conversation probably needing to be revisited again, but, um, I have some thoughts on it for sure, but go ahead.
Jesse, do you want me to introduce the aim and then kick it over to you, or do you just want to take it?
Yeah, go ahead.
So Atashna Madison Shield Warner had reached out to the Board of Trustees. Um, she did so with prior boards in August twenty twenty-one and then just recently asking that the board do an official acknowledgement of indigenous people. Um, so she had drafted the resolution that is before you. She did also indicate though, in addition to adopting the resolution, um, that the board make a declaration and that that also agrees and includes retaining the declaration as a heading on the town's website and social media accounts. So probably one of our ribbons at the top. Posting it prominently at the Netherland Visitor Center. Posting on a pedestal plaque in front of town hall, acknowledging indigenous peoples of the area and to host an educational event and invite a friend of hers. Um, as town staff, you know, really our only question is, because those are stipulations, Atashna had asked the board to consider there's a financial component there for the plaque. And so we would want to know how the board, how force he's paying for that. Um, but I think really the question is, do you have questions? I delay at this point for, for trustee receivers, because I have not talked to Atashna about this. Um, you know, you could also wait until she and Tom are present, uh, but Jesse, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, thanks, Miranda. So I, um, basically was, you know, simply moved by the, the topic and subject heading and, you know, I, I said, yeah, that sounds like, um, something I'd love to hear and learn more about Atashna when she wrote to the board. I'd be happy to sponsor to get you on the agenda. And Miranda, um, kindly gave me some constructive feedback, which was, you know, wh- what I heard anyway was to just kind of, um, you know, do a little more homework and have, have a little more, um, skin in the game before I just, you know, try to get something on the agenda right off the bat. And so, and that was, that was heard and, you know, I appreciate that. I'll, I'll, I'll do better in that, that regard moving forward. And, but I met with Na- Atashna and Tom to kind of hear Atashna's inspiration for the, the topic. And at the time, um, they both told me that they were, you know, I got to the meeting after they had already been discussing for twenty minutes or so. And they said they had already decided they were going to push it until summer and, and bring this back and kind of get it more prepared in July or so. And so I was thinking that we were gonna go move a little slower on this. And, yeah, I like the, the general direction of it and I do want for us to continue to, to move it forward. And I don't think, I don't have any more information as far as how to do it. I was a part of the Wild Bear Nature Center land acknowledgement, which was great. And, um, I don't know what Atashna has in mind, um, per se, other than what's on the aim for now. And I'm happy to be a, a champion of the, of the effort and the movement. However, you know, I don't, I don't have it all prepared at this point. So I think we can, you know, maybe discuss it a little bit, but I don't think we need to spend too much time on it tonight, but what are, what are you guys' thoughts?
Couple of questions. I'd like, when you, you guys come back, not you, but Anastasia comes back with this. I think she, obviously she needs to be here. Uh, and I'd like her friend to be here. Uh, I'm, I'm not seeing his name all of a sudden.
David, David, uh, Chief Joseph David.
Yeah, I'd like to hear a little bit about what he's going to be saying and if he's going to be giving a speech or whatever. Um, I'd like to hear the speech kind of or hear like a little bit what it's going to be like before. Uh, unanimously go for something? I also would like a little clarification on when it says that Netherland has a responsibility to, uh, address the past and that continue harm and responsibility. I know it's a part of it's just education, but I'm wondering if there's any other. I'd like the lawyer, Madison, to just make sure we're not responsible in any way, liable in any way for any of these past transgressions that we are here admitting to being responsible for. Um, and just what does she mean by we have a shared responsibility? Just, right? Does she, what does she expect out of us besides the plaque, besides this acknowledgement, besides this guy coming and speaking or doing a presentation? No more details before I can sign off.
Thanks, Tanya. Good, good concerns. Good point. Nicole?
Uh, yeah, so, um, I would actually love to, um, add a few things and sort of co-create this. Um, you know, one of the things that I noticed on the, the land acknowledgement is that the actual peoples of this land were not listed out. It just said indigenous peoples. Instead of calling out specifically the Cheyenne and the Ute, whose lands these were previously. And I was, I was actually quite curious as to why, um, that wasn't specifically called out. Um, because I've, I've seen it very specific with the, you know, the, the indigenous, um, peoples who have lived on this land. I've seen that called out specifically. Um, you know, the other phrase that I would add in there is, um, because I think it is a naming exercise and I think because naming has power. And that's why I was, I wanted to see those indigenous peoples, the specific, um, tribes listed.
They are listed.
The Cheyenne and the, the Ute?
Yeah, the Cheyenne, the Arapaho, the Ute, the indigenous people, Turtle Island.
Good.
Okay.
I don't. Go on, sorry.
Okay, fabulous. Um, so, yeah, so as long as they, we were, because I had seen indigenous peoples, you know, several times, and so I may not have picked up on that. So that's great. Um, one of the other pieces would be, um, you know, adding in the fact that it was stolen lands. Um, I think, again, going back to the naming exercise. It was genocide. It was, you know, treaties that were passed on. It was actually stolen land. And I, and I've seen that before in some of these other land acknowledgements. And again, it just kind of gives power to the fact that, um, you know, these folks were stewards to the land, um, before, before we came. Um, but the other thing I'd really love to have a conversation around with Atashna is some lines in there or some phrases around. And, and it's been really powerful when I've read him in other places where indigenous peoples aren't relics of the past. Right? There is a fruitful culture. Um, they are demonstrating talents and gifts to this day. Um, it, you know, I, I want that to kind of come through as well as like, this, these are, geez, these aren't relics of the past. There is, there's still so much that they're contributing to. And, um, and, and, and there's, there's something worth celebrating and wanted to make sure that something like that was also added into the land acknowledgement. I think that's really powerful and empowering because I, I would think that something like this is a land acknowledgement is to be empowering. Like people walk away feeling like inspired and empowered. Um, and so. Like people walk away feeling like inspired and empowered. Um, and so those were just a, just a few things that I'd love to have conversations with her about.
Thanks. Yeah, I, um, I appreciate Atashna's, you know, advocacy and, and bringing this forward to Netherlands. It looks like she that she brought it up in twenty twenty-one, you know, possibly even before that, um, as well, but appreciate her advocacy for this, for this, you know, um, effort and for, and for Native Americans, Indigenous folks of this area. And I, um, I look forward to kind of working more on this. I think, um, I, I will say, did talk to Mayor Larson, Chris Larson, and he, he did acknowledge that, um, he, he had reached out to the tribal leaders, I guess the Cheyenne, Arapaho are now kind of grouped together administratively as, as, as one, uh, they're not one tribe, but administratively that. And so he reached out to them. He reached out to Utes. He didn't get any replies yet. Um, but, you know, obviously COVID was hitting them pretty hard at that point. So, um, it just was not a priority, but I, I, I would very much like to see Indigenous people involved with this.
Yes.
It seems it, it's very, you know, like whitewashy, um, um, for us, us to, um, move ahead with this, you know, when we don't even have, um, Indigenous people truly involved. So I would like to see that come to pass where we really have, you know, the, 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 the real input of Indigenous folks on how this is worded and what it means. I, I feel like on some level, I, I, I have some concerns like Tanya pointed out with, with the wording of it, declaration itself, but, or the acknowledgement, but also, I also don't totally understand it. And I, I want us to, you know, I want a native, you know, Indigenous folks to help us with this, if we do this and, and help us to better understand it. So, you know, so that we can speak all of us, you know, with a clear head and, um, and, 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 and kind of whether two feet on the ground, when the, when the most skeptical people on talent ask is why would you even, you know, put, 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 put time into this or acknowledge this that we, we would understand and be able to articulate, well, what it is this, what this is, quite honestly. Um, I also did reach, reach out to Jill Drews to see, um, because she, you know, did have someone come do a blessing and consecration of their land with, with Wild Bear. And hopefully, uh, I'll hear back from her and get a sense. Maybe that'll be a way for me to start these dialogues. And, um, and that's the main thing. I just want this to be, if, if we get to the point where we take action on this, I want it to be a credible thing that we all really believe in and, and feel like we can stand being it.
Well, and I think we need to be, start with the education. Like we should be the first foot forward in understanding, you know, the whys and why this is important to them and what's happened on this land in order for this acknowledgement or this resolution to come forward. Right? If, like you said, if we can't speak to it and we don't have the education first, then how might we, you know, how might we spread the word?
Yeah, no, and I think that, that involves bringing people in who can educate us. So, um, so, yeah, so I appreciate it. And thanks for everyone's input. And Jesse, thank you for talking to Atashna about this. And, and thank you, Tom. Talking to Atashna about this. And thanks, Atashna. And we'll look forward to, um, working on this more into the future. Anything else on this?
Mayor Billy, are you looking to, to go on the seventeenth or are you, I'd just love to be able to follow up with Atashna?
No, no, no. I, 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 I don't expect anything significant to be ready for us in two weeks. I know.
Okay. So I'll just, I guess, uh, Jesse, just tentatively say that you all can work together to identify the date that that should come back.
Sounds good. Thanks.
Hey, bud. Um, so I'm just taking a final look here and, uh, is there any other business?
I just had a question.
Sure.
Miranda, when, what is the schedule for, uh, plowing sidewalks and whatnot in town in Ireland?
They're actually going to work on it this week. Um, the streets and parks team devised a plan to, I believe tomorrow, you'll see the teams out there. Um, the, the hope was that CDOT had offered today to do a significant portion of the sidewalks because they had plowed a lot of the snow on and, and unfortunately that just didn't work out. So our team, uh, met this afternoon and will be out there first thing in the morning.
In general, how does it work? It goes streets, obviously first, and then it, the sidewalk goes daily?
Parks department is the sidewalks. Um, so, so, yes, then typically streets will go out and do their thing, followed up by sidewalks. Um,
They're their own thing? So they have their own staff or they share staff?
They have their own staff.
Who do the sidewalk? They have that little plow thing?
Correct.
Do they hit it instantly? Like as soon as there's like, is it like the same rule, four inches of snow?
They don't necessarily always hit it instantly. There is not the same procedures for parks and sidewalks. I can ask Nikki if she can provide, uh, some guidance on that in her staff report.
Yeah, I would like that.
Yeah.
That we make a, a good effort on this if we're going to continue to make more sidewalks. They're actually, we're actually worse off than having no sidewalks when they don't get plowed or shoveled or anything. Cause then people have to walk in the streets.
Yep. I'm just, yeah, so I'll ask Nikki to add in her staff report for the seventeenth. Um, and outline of kind of the way she approaches sidewalks because there isn't a policy, like there is streets plowing. Doesn't mean that one can't be made, but there, one doesn't exist.
How would we make a policy?
Uh, she could work on one.
She could work on one?
Yep.
I think, I think there should be a policy. We're going to have sidewalks. They need to be, there needs to be a system for it, not just whenever there's time.
Yes.
My opinion.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I can talk to Nikki about that.
All these sidewalks, we're in snow six months out of the year, you know?
But I think that should include our trails.
Trails? Trails, we ski, we bike, fat bike. I don't need them plowed. Do you?
Well, a policy about how to maintain them.
Ah, I got you. Sure. Yeah. Like dead trees and whatnot that could fall and hurt somebody. That one, then we might as well then have a policy for, with our pocket parks.
Yes.
Okay. That was all I was wanting to know.
Yeah, I will send a quick message. Just send a message to Nikki, but I will send a follow-up email as well.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah. Um, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Was that trustee Corvallon or trustee Sterling? I'm sorry.
Corvallon who seconded.
Thank you. All right, Mayor Billy. Trustee Corvallon?
Yeah.
Trustee Sterling?
Yes.
Trustee Seavers?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks everybody. Appreciate your time. Tanya, thanks for joining us from Costa Rica. Jesse, thanks for joining us from Mexico.
New Mexico.
Yeah, I, I said, New Mexico.
Okay.
Noted. Um, and Nicole, thanks for joining. Thanks, everybody.
Bye.
Have a good night.
Great. Bye.